All right, folks, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. We will begin with the call of, well, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and then get a call of the roll. There we go. It's just like, we are short a county clerk. All right, thanks, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and now if the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson.
Here.
Supervisor Pat Breslin. Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Score. Supervisor Steen. Supervisor Zanz. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Willsey is excused. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Whitzel. Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Keeter, or Calibreeze is excused. Keeter. Supervisor Keeter is here. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Carl Vandermeulen.
Here.
Supervisor Robinson.
No idea.
Okay. Supervisor Morehouse.
Here.
Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Tom Gilbert is excused. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Hartung.
Again, no idea. All right. So, we're gonna be going through a lot of information today. We don't have a vote to take on this. This is just to give everybody a chance to get up to speed on what we're talking about. And something that came up at the last, the executive meeting right before this, that I wanted to use to frame this. So the CIP is our plan for essentially durable county assets, whether that's roads, buildings, dump trucks, whatever. It is not a borrowing plan. We have many funding streams that will feed into this. And this year, we are actually looking at borrowing a relatively small amount of money, if any at all. And that probably on a short-term basis, based on what the executive committee has recommended. So this is, this is to contextualize the sort of the long-term needs of the county outside of our standard operating budget. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn things over to Chris. And I will try and keep an eye out for everybody and grab questions as they come up. If I don't catch you pretty quick, bark at me or something, I will, I will get there.
All right, good morning. Thank you for being here on a Saturday morning. And we're gonna try to, like, Chair McCullough said, we're gonna try to get you out of here in a timely manner. So, we're gonna start with a kind of a starting point of where we're at. And so you have a solid basis to make decisions on going forward. So today, we're gonna look at some historic trends. We're gonna look at levy amount with debt service, levied amount without debt service, our annual operating budget, the highway levy, and then a snapshot of what levy would look like if it had been tied to inflation or a 2% increase.
And I'm gonna just insert a brief comment in here. Some of this is data that Chris has pulled together on very short notice that I asked her to grab yesterday morning. So, any, any, you know, political overtones to this are mine.
Okay, here we go. So, I thought it was really important. And so all of this information is in your PowerPoints in front of you as well, as well as Beata's PowerPoint, so that you can rely on the screen, but you can also take a look at, at the documents in front of you. So I thought it was really important to borrow or to look at some of the definitions of terms. And I'm sorry if this is too elementary. For some people, it will be. For some people, it won't be. But sort of finance language, and it's not necessarily something we all have practiced in our life. So, long-term borrowing is simply stated loans that are repaid over more than a year. Typically, when we borrow, we do that in the form of a bond issue. And those are 10 or even 20-year, depends on, on the size and the, and the structure of the bond. Short-term borrowing are loans that are repaid in less than a year. And we're gonna talk somewhere about that in a bit. Debt service is the money that's required to pay the principal and interest on a loan over a period of time. So when we get to the slides that talk about debt service, we're gonna talk about how much is owed, how much is debt service occurs in a year's period of time. And then principal, obviously, is the original amount of the debt on which interest is calculated. Levy is the taxes that are imposed on, from, from our budget. Debt levy is the portion of levy taxes which are earmarked toward debt payment. And the reason why that's important is because, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, we have levy caps, but we are able to exceed them for debt service. So paying the principal and interest that's due in that period of time, we can go above and beyond and levy for that debt service. And so debt levy is that the portion of that levy that we collect that's earmarked to pay off the debt or pay down the debt. And then interest is just that money that's regularly, paid regularly at a particular rate for the use of money that's borrowed. And mostly, I just wanted you to have those as a reference in case you're kind of like, oh, what, what is that again? Okay, so this is a look at our current levy with debt service. So again, levy cap plus debt service, whatever we're going to pay on the principal and interest in a particular year. So, in 2022, our current levy with debt service is 20, a little over $24 million. And I did an eight-year look back, because that was the amount of time in which I could grab information kind of easily to do a comparison. So in 2016, our levy with debt service was 21 million, a little over $21 million. So over an eight-year period of time, our levy has gone up 14% with debt. And you can see that sort of generally upward trend. It's about 2.75% averaged out over the years. Then, oh, yep. Then we're gonna take a look at levy without debt service. So if I take the total amount of levied and I pull off what we're gonna pay off, what we were allowed to go over to pay off debt, this still isn't really our levy cap number, because this includes payments for libraries, jail, jail assessment, and something else. Bridge petitions. So this includes those items. So it's not purely where our limit is at, but it does pull the levy off of the top of it. So if you look at that, then our current levy is about $19.1 million. Yep. Oh, what's happening? Hmm. Dan, fix it. There you go. All right, sorry. So our, so our current levy is a little over, with, without debt, is a little over 19 million. And our current, and our levy in 2016 without debt was a little over 19 million. So essentially, if you take 2016 into 2023, we have reduced by 2.6% in terms of our levy. Any questions about those two items? All right, this is our annual operating budget. This year, it's 92 million, 92 and a half million dollars. In 2016, it was 76 million dollars. That's a 22% increase over that period of time. And you can see the plotting, plot, plotting of that on that graph. This was a really interesting slide. Sometimes you can talk about numbers and then you, you actually look at them or see them visualized, and it's, it's a whole, kind of a whole different or very much different story, exaggerated story. So here is our current levy for the highway department is $3.7 million in 2023. In 2016, it was $6.8 million. That means over the ensuing eight years, we have reduced the amount of money that we've moved into the highway department for construction and maintenance projects, et cetera, by 45%. So we've talked a lot before about kind of the highway funding crisis, in a sense. This is definitely a piece of that, that, the reasoning behind that. And again, it's not that we spent less levy, because you see our levy expenditures stayed pretty, pretty stable. This just means that we've moved about $3 million from the highway fund into other operations. This is a slide which just gives you an idea of what things would look like if a couple of different scenarios had played themselves out between 2016 and now. If you recall, when we learned about levy limits, we learned that in the early years of levy limits, we were allowed to add 2%, minimum 2% to our levy. So in the last column, had we been able to add 2% instead of just our net new construction, it would have gone up by, it would be a difference of about $3 million that we would have collected in 2023. The middle one is if the levy had stayed in sync with CPI or the inflation rate. And then we would have about a million and a half extra dollars. But as it is, you can see that in, with net new construction and all of the moving around pieces, we have essentially stayed flat over the last eight years. So the summary piece, that's just important to keep in the back of your mind, is that our operating budget has written, risen about 22% over eight years. Our levy with debt has risen about 14%. And our levy without debt has decreased by 2.6%. So now we're gonna move into, oh, let me, real quick, I've just, the only way I know to do this is. This is not a pretty slide, because I made it this morning, or pretty thing that I made it this morning. This is just, again, in reference, as we were talking about shared revenues and state aids. And shared the slide at the last county, or the handout at the last county board meeting, which says that essentially in 1987, the state contributed about 46% of a county's operating costs in state aid. And in 2023, it was 26%. It's a pretty remarkable number when you look at that. So if all things were the same and we still received 46% of our cost in state aids, we would be at $32 million instead of $18 million. So it's a lot of, a lot of money.
That's, that's one of the pieces of data I wanted to grab, because I wanted to highlight where would we, where we would be in our budget process if the state had continued paying of, of this, kind of the share that I would expect them, given that we are a creature of the state and much of what we do is mandated by the state.
So now we're gonna move a little bit, shift. I've had an opportunity to speak with a few of you about this that I've seen over the last few days, just because it is a new concept, something that I'm not aware of, that Dunn County's done in the past, or if they have it, it hasn't happened for a bit. So this is the concept of short-term borrowing. So how this would work would be, there are, when we get to the KIP budget requests, by the way that we ask our department heads for them, they include kind of two, two-ish pots of things. They include true capital improvement requests, things we want to build, things that have to be, big things that have to be fixed or remodeled, those types of things. They also include equipment purchases over $10,000. That's just the way that we set it up to ask, so we can be looking at those bigger purchases and planning for them. So, there are a fair number of items in the KIP requests, which do not warrant long-term borrowing. Most easily identified out of that, I think that we all could reflect, would be one of those, one, one of those items or items would be the squad car replacement. We need to replace our squad cars on a revolving basis. This year, I believe it's $310,000 in the capital improvement request process for those squads. Makes no sense to borrow for 10 or 20 years for a squad car that's gonna be decommissioned inside of probably five years or so. So, all of those purchases, again, there's room for interpretation about what would end up as not necessarily should be in the larger portion of the KIP. But if I look at those just based on what we, what we, Beata and I saw, they, we've thought that they came up to about $500,000 of things that are in a three and a half million dollar request that are really truly not capital expenditures. So the way this would work would be at the end of 2023, in the last few days of the year, we would borrow, I'm just gonna use the $500,000 number, $500,000 from a local bank. And that would allow us to exceed our levy, the amount levied, by that $500,000 in 2024. So again, remembering that debt service is not included in our levy cap, because we say we're borrowing it in 2023 and we're repaying it in 2024. It goes into our 2024 calculation. So then we would levy for it. In the first few days of 2024, we would turn around and repay it so that it would be, it would be paid off immediately, resulting in very nominal interest amount between the very end of '23 and the beginning of '24. And then we would, we'd, we'd use, just use internal, you know, cash flow, money, investment money. What, you know, some small, some money that we have sitting aside, general fund money to pay it off. And then we'd collect the levy as it's received over the year. So the amount borrowed would be levied for and paid for in full in 2024. So, here are some pros and some cons. So the pros would be it allows us to temporarily increase our levy for debt service. It's time limited. You decide which items of the KIP should be borrowed for in this short-term process, and the total accrued interest would be small. The cons would be that it increases, oops, spelled increases wrong, increases the levy in 2024 for one year, and it has an impact on the taxpayers. And I'll show you what that is in a minute. We would need to coordinate multiple steps at the end of the year in a short timeframe. And we have to be careful to not inadvertently have it become a habit. So we can knowingly have it become a habit if you chose, but you want to not say, oh, it was easy to do that la, last year, let's do it again this year. And you know that five or 10 years from now, we'll say, when did we ever start that process of short-term borrowing? And then it'll have become a habit. So it's just a caution. And then this is the, in, this is the, and they realize that this is a small slide that you probably can't see terribly well. It's not all that, oops, not all that important except for down here. I don't know how to do that. Like that. Um, so down here, it shows you county debt taxes. So this is just on the debt, that $500,000 of debt added to the county's debt. So currently, the county taxpayers paying $191.74 on $150,000 valued for debt service. And if we added $500,000 of short-term debt to that, it would move it to $210,000. So it's about an 18, it's $18.91 cent increase. So for 2024, when people received their tax bills on $150,000, they would receive, it would cost them an extra $19, essentially. But it would be for that one year, unless, again, there was a decision in the future to do short-term borrowing. So that's just a concept. It's a tool for your toolkit as you look at the capital improvement planning. I think that that's all I have. Any questions?
Supervisor Gary Bjork. Much. First, like, just a comment, and then I got a question. I'm on a town board and we have, you know, debt. We are, got real good facilities, good equipment. And the state is drowning in money. Why are we caught in the middle? That's just a comment, but my question is, on our 2023 budget, how much of the capital improvement is already included? Is there like your facilities, are you going to put a roof on another building? Is that already part of the budget? You know, I, I wanna know what part of capital improvement is already in the budget, roughly.
So we are, so 2020 projects or things that will happen in 2023 are in the 2023 budget, and those were part of what you approved last year.
Right.
Now we're talking about 2024.
Okay.
And these are the requests. There's about $3.5 million of requests for 2024, and you'll see those shortly.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then I am going to stop sharing and turn this over to Beata, who's gonna take us through the next part. So let's just last in a minute, and we'll be ready.
We'll get there.
All right, well, good morning. Thank you for joining us on such a lovely Saturday. It's warm. Didn't see that one coming. Been kind of out of town, and I come back, I'm like, well, this is great. It's getting really nice and warm. So thank you so much for coming out on this important day. I provided you a PowerPoint, present you here with a PowerPoint presentation. Just gonna be providing you more of a high level. In your packet, what we've included is a little bit more detailed information on the five-year capital improvement plan. And in that detail, it outlines the items per departments, the estimated costs, and also provides a narrative explanation as to what it is that they're purchasing, reasons behind it, and so on. Also, keep in mind that management is here either online or in person to answer any questions you might have. So let's begin with, kind of create a backdrop on our financial positions. How are we doing? So right now, there is, of course, levy limit and debt. And as of, end of December 31st of 2022, we have 32 million point four of debt. And right now, we are at double A score. And what that is, is our, think of it as your FICO score, or, so this is for businesses, they rate them this way. So we are at double A. And there's a lot of things that go into this type of an assessment. And part of it is our fund balance, also impacts, I don't wanna go through all the variables, but, right. So we are pretty healthy in that department. So the next slide, I also wanted to highlight, what is our existing debt? So we have some debt that we borrowed, we have some debt that we refinanced. Ultimately, what you see here is what we currently have as an existing debt. And on the bottom there is our debt service repayments or obligations. So I've highlighted the debt as is, current, is 32.6. And I also let you guys know what the interest is. I think this question came up last time we've met. How much interest are we paying? So that's 3.1 mil. So in total, we have 35.75. Okay. Next slide, please. Oh, yes. Any questions on this slide before we go into? Okay. So the next slide is really a visual. I wanted you to see how we are paying down debt. So in 2022, we are at 32 million. And as we're paying off debt, so this just says, you know, I also highlight each color represents the type of a debt that we took out. And this kind of shows when it will be paid off, if, under the assumption we would not borrow any. But, next slide, please. So I've summarized what management submitted for their 24 and through 28 capital improvement plan. So in total, for the five years, is 20 million. Also, keep in mind that we do not include in that number any highway department's construction projects and county maintenance projects. So specific for highway, those are their equipment and some other items that we'll kind of introduce later. But I just wanna point that out. So specific just for 2024, management put together, then the request is at $3.56 million.
Yeah, you'll see a breakout on that, and also the funding sources going to it as.
As we prog, yeah, as we progress. So here, I wanted to also give you an idea of what our new debt would look like. But under the assumption that we would continue borrowing $3 million each year for the next five years.
And if I might, that $3 million isn't arbitrary. It was the ongoing five-year planning that we had, had set up. And part of the reason we chose that number was it would allow us to essentially pay down all of our debt over time, because we were paying, paying off considerably more debt than that $3 million a year. And also, I will note that we did not borrow that much last year, and we are not intending to borrow that much this year.
But I also wanted you to see what the principal payment would be and the interest if we were to borrow $3 million every year for the next five years. So it's fairly self-explanatory when you think about, so you see that in 2023, we'll pay four and a half million dollars of principal. And if you were to borrow, or in the next year, for, again, four and a half million dollars, if you were to borrow $3 million, you're still paying off $2 million more than what you are borrowing for. So that's why the number can continue to go down, even though you're borrowing money. It's sort of counterintuitive. Because that principal here includes existing debt. Yeah, that's okay. You can go. Next slide, please. So here's our existing debt and the new debt. So I wanted to kind of give you a side-by-side kind of comparison. The green line represents that this is our existing debt. And when would it be paid off, assuming that we're just not, we've never gonna borrow again. But, so, but I separate, I show you the gold line. So the gold line is saying, moving forward for next five years, if we borrow that $3 million, what would that look like? And our activities as we're paying off our debt. So this is just side-by-side comparison. And also, this is a, again, the side-by-side comparison on the county debt tax on a house valued at $150,000. Next slide, please. Any questions on this? So other things, I wanna. So other things I want to uh, bring forward is how we did the 2023 budget. So in 2023, we applied some uh, ARPA funds of three point seven million. We also applied some fund balance to support wages and new position, an amount of two point three million. And we also have hundred and seventy-three that was drawn from the fund balance for IT, land modernization and equipment purchases.
Yeah.
I'm sorry? Oh, IT.
That's not that of a general fund.
Yes, I'm sorry. The IT, the one seventy-three doesn't come from the general fund. It comes from the IT fund. So on this slide, uh, yep, on this slide, I wanted you to see how our activity has been in the last five years with our general fund. So that is money coming in and money coming out. So when we're talking about transfer in and transfer out, so when you see a negative, that means we've ended the year in a loss. So we needed to draw on money out of the, the fund. The positive is the money that we've put back because we did really well and we end the year in, in black. So that's what it represents and also tracking there, what is our general fund balance? So in 2021, we were at seventeen. And that's audited numbers. So on the si- on the other uh, side, we have the percentage rate. So we're at sixty percent. And what does that mean? That means that we have enough expenses, assuming that we would have no cash flow or money coming in, we would have enough money in our savings to pay for our operating budget for six months. Okay? And the recommended rate is at twenty-five to thirty-three percent. So here we are way above that. Another item to uh, to think about, things to consider is that if we were, if uh, we were to assume that there is no new position requests and no changes in health fare benefits for 2024, and with a potential of wage increases in 2024 by three point five percent, that may result uh, in two point four million dollars in needed funding for 2024 when we ready to go in our county budget. Any questions on this slide? Yes.
I'm not quite following, but I'm just wondering. So the recommended is twenty-five to thirty-three percent and we're at sixty percent. Is that in the good direction or the bad direction?
Oh, very good direction.
Just checking. Yeah, thanks.
So our fund balance is, is in a really good shape. And that fund balance really plays a role in our um, rating, our credit rating. Next slide. Any, any other questions before we go to the next one? Oh, uh, we've grabbed the, the um, old one.
I can change bar funds.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So uh, you know, so with this, what you um, was included in the packet, the number that's there includes me accounting for depreciation. After much discussion with Chris and I, we wanted to show what would the true bottom line is because we really don't pay out depreciation. That kind of is a financial, uh, fina- um, uh, financial, uh, on the financial statements type of an item. But we wanted to kind of demonstrate what would that surplus be for all the departments. So that's really the difference between the number you saw there and the number that I represented into executive, which we'll see, you see here in a little bit. Yep, that's done. Yep. So we'll go to slide. Yeah. Okay. So we're, some, you want to share? Okay. So uh, yep. We didn't want to overwhelm you with all the data, so we want to keep it at a high level. So another one, um, we've kind of, um, I've already highlighted some of the assumptions with the um, no health insurance increases or no new positions added. There will be into, if there is a um, um, approval for three point five increase in wages, if that's the case in 2024, this would be additional funding needed. Approximately. So then we're looking at projected twenty-twenty-two year end. So in 2022, we's pilot, piloted really early in the year with all the various department to work on our projections. Part of the goal here was to give us an idea where we might end the year instead of waiting for the audit. So we add, based on some of those projections, then we're estimating that we'll put back two point two million dollars back to the general fund. And we've already accounted for all the carryforwards.
Uh, just a moment. Supervisor Thomas?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I just have a quick question about the uh, your um, three point five percent wage increase. Is that um, is that kind of the normal number historically year by year for, for like a wage increase?
It's a bit of a plugged number because it's fairly early. It's this, for this year, it's based on, so the way that the grid works is that there's a, people tend to move up a step on the grid, which is two point seven five percent.
Okay.
And then the three and a half percent gets us to CPI for this year.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And the last item here is that highway may also contribute an additional one point five million to the highway equipment replacement fund. And uh, this is uh, the I, highway equipment replacement fund. For some of you is very new or we haven't heard of yet. So since twenty twenty-one and when I came in twenty twenty-two, we started looking at highway uh, financials, uh, preparing some tools to help us kind of navigate through those complexities, be able to look at projections. Kind of have a tighter eye on the um, activities, what we're paying for, how we're billing for our services, what's the best practice? And what result, one of the items that resulted out of that uh, was that we wanted to look at uh, best practice, a part of how do we replace our existing equipment? And uh, every time we do a project, including uh, county, um, we charge for that project and part of that cost in that project is wages, oil, fuel, uh, any parts, screws. I really don't know much about equipment. So there's a, a lot of that goes into that, that cost. So when we go out to do this project, we also using our equipment that we already have in a shop. We not buying it because we bought it a while ago. So we're using this equipment, but it's part of that cost. So we pay ourselves or we pay ourselves for the, to do this project. And at the end, we run the report to tell us out of this project, how much equipment did we use? To give us a number. And that number, because we have a surplus, should then go into that account to replace any future equipment to prevent us from borrowing money for those.
I, I'm going to hop in real quick on this one as the former highway chair and Dustin can correct me if I'm wrong. The part of this that you probably, that is most relevant is uh, equipment operating hours. So for each piece of equipment, we have an operating hour cost. When we do a project for the state, the state pays us a certain rate per operating hour cost and that's how, that's how some of that surplus is built up. But we also track when we are doing a project, what the operating hour costs are so that we can think in terms of what we need to do for equipment to maintain our operating hour costs. Is that as in essence Dustin? Great.
Right. He made it really simpler. So in, in the past, uh.
Supervisor Kinnear.
Uh, just, just a comment. Uh, for those of you that, that came in after the executive committee meeting, we had a ton of questions. So don't feel bad. If you have a question, ask it please. Uh, because then it'll help me because I may have forgotten the answer from the first one. So it, 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 don't feel bad about asking a question. It is confusing and we had a lot of questions answered uh, in the first meeting. That's all.
Supervisor Zons, and I can just add to that, that it's really helpful actually, going through this a second time. It really is helpful. I'm like, okay, it's starting to gel. So yes, I, I echo, I echo Supervisor Kinnear in saying, if you have questions, ask them and, and uh, it'll, it'll really help.
Fine. So any questions on this slide?
And do you have one?
No. All right. Uh, last slide I have before any questions, any more questions is another thing is uh, projects for highway may need additional funding for 2024. So those are the items that are not included in the capital improvement plan that we'll go over today. So those are county construction projects, uh, county maintenance, those types. So there might be a need for additional funding as we go into our 2024 operating budget. Also, but if the twenty, twenty-four highway projects require any borrowing, then of course we will need to amend this 2024 CIP that won't need to be in process when we go issue debt. And then the last one is with question mark. I must be running low on battery or something. I don't know. Um, the reason why we didn't plug you a number as to what we anticipate highway need being is because we really have almost literally no idea at this point in time. We haven't started to prepare the 2024 operating budget. Um, there are so many variables in terms of what projects are done, what funding sources are paid for them, what our other county costs are. Um, that it's just too difficult to do that this early in the year. However, if we are going to borrow for it, then one of the reasons why you can borrow money is because it's a part of your capital improvement plan. And so we would move those highway projects then in the fall into an amended capital improvement plan if you decided to borrow money for them, if that makes sense.
And I'm going to add one more piece of context since borrowing is part of our topic. When we approved the budget, we approved up to a million dollars in borrowing for this year and noted that we did not anticipate borrowing that money. We still do not anticipate borrowing that money. So that million dollars of debt probably will not happen. And then Supervisor Vogel.
Thank you. Um, so I just had a question about um, because the short-term debt for five hundred thousand, it looked like it increased levy by about nineteen dollars or a hundred fifty. So, but it, when we look at the three million, we had kind of planned, it didn't seem to affect the levy. In that one slide, back a few, but it should, right? I mean, the levy should go up no matter whether it's short-term or long-term. Borrowing?
Not, not necessarily because again, we're borrowing for debt service and we're paying off more money than we're borrowing for. So we're um, the, the number, the number, the amount of money that we've borrowed for isn't going up. So there's not additional taxing. It's going down. Does that make sense?
So it shouldn't matter whether it's short or long-term. It would be this.
So short-term it goes up because short-term we're saying, we're going to do it in a year.
Okay.
So we're going to calculate the cost that it's going to bump our existing debt up. Now it's conceivable, really it might not. But for the sake of being as transparent as possible about this, if you know, being sort of um, calculating all of these things out, I think it's safest to say think that it might cost twenty dollars per hundred and fifty thousand dollars versus not. And then maybe it won't.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, there we go. Sorry. Uh, several. Uh, first Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as stated, going through this twice is, is helpful. I was just wondering if we were done today, if we did it a third time, if anyone would want to stick around. Okay. That was just a wise guy. Going to the bond. Going to the uh, uh, the bond rating, the double A bond rating, you know, I'm familiar with that. There are other bond ratings and I've heard as much as, you know, this triple A bond rating or trip something plus, all this kind of stuff. So I can understand how your uh, short-term borrowing uh, for equipment, paying, well, what I'm trying to get at is that when we see the forty-five percent decrease in the amount of money that's gone to highway department over the last number of years, and we've seen the less amount of state aid that comes to the counties while the state stays uh, in a surplus. Doesn't that catch up with you sooner or later in a bond rating? Does it make it, does, does a bond rating make a difference if your highways are up to a certain standard of repair versus if they're not?
No. So there's a lot of variables that go into that rating. One is our county as a whole, economy as well. Our um, construction, you know, how many properties are building, looking at, do you have land that can potentially expand? So there's a lot of variables that go into, say, how are your financially doing? Okay. Also, you know, kind of looking at your pool of money coming in, your taxpayer base. Um, what does that look like? What do you have around you, universities, businesses? So they've kind of assessed our position where we might be um, financially. Because those are taxpayers or businesses coming to town. They're the ones that are paying taxes and that kind of becomes a source of money. Also, they're looking at our audit reports. Uh, they're looking to see if, you know, are we doing best practice as far as financials? Uh, they're also looking at what is your fund balance? Um, how are you paying for your items? Are you so much in debt that then you become a high risk? So you as an investor saying, hmm, do I want to buy bond uh, from Dunn County if they can barely keep their head above the water? Because they're financially uh, either poor decision-making or lack of funding. So there's a lot of, of variables that actually go into finding out what is our credit worth.
Uh, the short answer to that is no, the, the, the bonding rating agencies don't really have a way to track the state of our pavement, except uh, to the extent that we are borrowing to fix it.
But, but you're telling me that if we decided not to fix County B and just dump gravel on it and made it a gravel road, that it wouldn't affect our bond rating?
Not unless it also affected business in Dunn County in a way that was able, that the bond agencies could easily track. And you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, got it.
Um, Supervisor Barrier.
Um, so uh, um, every year we're paying down debt by a certain amount and we're also taking on new debt in a certain amount. And we're paying down more than we're taking on. So it washes out in a good direction. Um, I'm good with that. That makes sense. Can you give me the simple explanation for why, why we're not just paying down less debt instead?
When, okay. So we have a debt obligation that's established at the time that we go issue debt. But in my very first uh, slide, one, two, three, three, slot, slide three. So our payments are based on some of the debt that we have taken on. So slide three?
I, I think I can answer this in a, in a quick, simple way.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so when, 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 when you take out a mortgage on your house, you establish a, a set of debt payments and unless you refinance, those are the debt payments you're paying. So the only way to change the amount we are paying would be to refinance.
Okay.
Right, so.
Answer the question?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. You can finish.
I'm, I'm just trying to translate between, between different language sets.
Yeah, I was trying to, because I understand household budgets, so that's really helpful. Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Chairman, um, just a couple of comments and a question. Uh, one is, you know, we all get the green book and I see in there that out of the 72 counties, Dunn County is number five for having the most obligation bonds per citizen. So I, I don't know how that would help our reading. And the other two more comments is, um, it's stout, which is a big part of, of Menominee. Do they pay any kind of taxes or because they're like a, a state agency, there's no income from all their real estate? Huh. And my last comment is if the highway department has taken less money to help out other departments to get over some bad times, maybe it's time for all the departments to put a little bit of money back into the highway department instead of just taking. I just a comment, but thank you, sir.
And, and part of that honestly just goes back to this fact that if you look again at the amount of levy without debt service, it hasn't changed in eight years. So as I've indicated to you before, all of you before, you know, none of us are spending the same amount of money that we did eight years ago, most likely. Even if you're buying a gallon of milk or a gallon of gas or whatever. So all of those other departments have increased costs as well. And then a wonky labor market hasn't helped either. But I would go back to, I think it's really important and I brought the slide back up to look at this new, new debt, because if you look at this left hand side to the year end balance, the ad has made it made an assumption of borrowing $3 million a year. Again, just it's just because that was agreed upon in 2020. Um, as a potential, um, use of borrowing, 3 million, she's adding $3 million a year of debt for the next five years, but our balance decreases every year over those next five years. So if you see that left hand column there of, is it on your left too? Yes, on your left, um, left hand column. You know, we're, we're not borrowing, we're borrowing more money, we're not increasing our debt. The amount, the total amount of debt that we're incurred, we've incurred, or we're holding, whatever the word is for that.
So it's starting in, you'll see a 2023. Uh, and so 2023, this is the debt that we've already borrowed. So if the direction is to borrow in 2024, that principal payment will not come due until 2025. Because it's late in the year. And then our principal will not come due until the following year. But in meantime, even in that year, we, we paid off 4 million, 4.9 million in 24 and 23 would be 4.6. So by the time we ready to go borrow for this 2024 year, we'll have paid off about 8 million before our next payment comes due. So it is, we're paying off more in principle than we are borrowing. The slide that had the graph, that kind of says this is where we'll start paying off our debt. Our peak was there because we've invested some money in other, um, high ticket items, uh, than health center and so on.
So I'm going to do just a little bit of a preemption to the very end of the presentation and I'm going to tell you that, you know, we're talking a lot about that because it becomes a really a big discussion point about when do you borrow, when, when don't you, what's our stance on borrowing at all? When you get to the end and you see all of the items that are potential, you're going to essentially have five options for funding. You're going to be able to look at the list and say, we're not going to do that or buy that in 2024. We're going to short term borrow for some of it. We're going to long term borrow for some or all of it. We're going to use some of our general fund balance, which is healthy for some, some or all of it. Or the fifth one escapes me.
Arpa.
Arpa money. Good, good, good on y'all. Um, so, or some combination of all of that, which is as you'll see when we get to the options, but just so you're thinking about, we're not talking about borrowing 3 and a half million dollars or $3 million. We're talking about when you get to the end, you need to know where we're at for borrowing now so you can make decisions about whether you wish to borrow in the future.
Supervisor Hagan.
Thank you. Um, I have a clarification, I guess, about the slide about the percent of unassigned fund balance to general fund expenditures. Said we're at 60% and the number is for like healthy, what you said, 20 to 30%?
That's the recommended 30, 33.
You said that because we're at 60%, that is really good for our S and P rating. Is that correct?
That says part of it, yes, but not all of it.
Yeah. Um, so if we say, all right, well, we're at 60%, but general healthiness is going to be 20 to 30%. So we could have like 30% of that to play with and still be within the healthy range, but that because we are at 60%, we would probably get like a better, um, interest rate, rating and all that stuff because we're up that high versus if we just take that money out now to pay off. So it's actually good that we're up that high and we have that budgeted in. Otherwise, you'd get less um, through our S and P rating, correct?
Right.
Okay.
You know, and, and then now that's.
As you say, it is good both for our potential borrowing. And generally, it's not a bad thing to have a, a comfortable cushion in our, in our general fund. It, it, it speaks to the, um, financial responsibility with which uh, our staff and this board have stewarded the funds of Dunn County.
Thank you.
I would also, if my microphone turned on, I would also that we should move on.
Because this was, it's all part of, we're building a story. So you're going to kind of get additional pieces of this as we move forward.
So now we're going to show you a report. Oh, that's going to, it's part of your packet as well. So this just summarizes on a higher level. All the 2024 capital improvement items requested and estimated price. After that, we'll show you more of, start tying money to it, how that's going to be funded. And we're like, uh, Chris mentioned, there are options, but we're providing you some of the options as to how that potentially can be funded.
And just a reminder, these are in your handout, so you don't have to squint.
Right, and we'll share a screen there.
Again, oh, I didn't.
So this too gives you an opportunity to ask management any questions you might have. So this list is, as you go through, you might decide maybe some of these items here, we're not, you might not, uh, go with purchasing and maybe some of it, maybe all, it, it's, this is where your decision comes in. But right now, as management submitted, those are 3.56 million dollars in total.
So drawing your attention to the sheriff's department items there, you see those squad cars for 310,000, it's five squad cars replacement, that's the rotation each year. That would be an item that would potentially be available for short term borrowing. So if you have questions about any of those items, all of those department heads are either here in person or online and can speak to them.
Supervisor Lino.
Yeah, I just had, uh, one question here. The first one out, replace, uh, survey grade GPS.
Uh, Supervisor Lino, could you pull your microphone down? The
All right.
folks online can't hear you.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I'm just looking at item number one, replace survey grade GPS, $30,000. Uh, can't we just use Google Maps?
So Chase Cummings has donated his Saturday morning to come here just for that question.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, everyone. Thank you Supervisor Lino for making my time worth it here today. Um, yes, this request is for equipment that we use in the land and water conservation division to, uh, do topographic surveys for particular conservation projects like dams, waterways, um, mineral storage structures, barn yards, those, those sorts of things. So it is a, a piece of equipment that, um, certainly we can gain some knowledge from, um, you know, Google Maps and things like that with LiDAR, but um, this is particular, uh, getting specific to it, doing an engineering design plan where we have to be accountable to the practice standards for the taxpayer funds that are coming into cost share to those projects. So this piece of equipment, um, we currently have one that is over, um, just over 10 years old. Technology is, um, escaping us, so this is to upgrade that and helps make our jobs more efficient and effective when we're, you need to put, um, conservation practices on the land and use state cost share dollars for that.
I, I was just wondering, is this more for the surveyors, that kind of thing?
This, um, so surveying, uh, the surveying department and division do use, uh, similar equipment. Uh, this is specifically for our land and water conservation division, for our technical staff to do the, the survey and design for building projects on the land and not necessarily land surveys. This is for topographic, uh, cut, fill, uh, determine engineering practices.
So Google Maps wouldn't cut it, huh?
Nope.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chase, uh, I would assume that if you're using cost sharing federal dollars, that, uh, they'd be kind of specific on what you were giving them for information for your, the way you're going to do a project, right?
Correct.
Part of it.
Yeah, so there's a, a conservation practice standards that are shared uh, throughout the state of Wisconsin, both federally and state funded projects must meet a certain practice standard. And those standards require a certain level of detail, which this equipment is part of, part of providing that. Hey, if that's it, you guys have a good day.
Thanks, Chase.
And I would, um, I would ask if it would be okay as the department heads answer their questions, if it's okay for them to leave?
It works, certainly works for me.
Anyone else have objection to that? Okay.
Run, run like the wind.
I would invite, um, Dustin to come up. He did for the executive committee. I think it would be helpful for the board at large to hear about, um, two items on his list for building addition and, uh, construction design for the Rock Falls. Raj.
I'm going to note something that Dustin had mentioned earlier about how long the Rock Creek has been on the, on our agenda. I will note that it was something Molly was talking about when I started, for those of you who remember Molly. So it's been a while.
Thank you for that. Um, so thank you. So I just want to go through a few of the items, uh, that I have on the CIP request for highway. Uh, in particular, the Rock Falls, uh, building a new Rockfall shop, um, in Rock Falls as well as the Menominee addition um, to our Menominee highway shop. Uh, so just give you a little background information regarding the Rockfall shop. It is a 72 year old building. Uh, it's approximately 1600 square foot, um, block building uh, with no insulation, no running water, uh, no bathroom facilities. Uh, employees utilize a, uh, porta potty that's outside in the winter and summer months. This particular building houses two plow trucks as well as, uh, various equipment. Uh, signs, uh, safety sta- stands, um, road closure so, signs, all that stuff. The intent is to start the process to rebuild this, uh, shop. Um, we do have two properties down in Rock Falls, one for the building shop. And about a quarter mile down the road, we have a salts, uh, salt, uh, shed facility. Uh, so we would look at basically selling off or demolishing whatever the building that's there currently um, and relocating that to our salt shed, uh, facility property. Uh, so we would start the process of going through the design in 2024. Uh, and looking at long term, uh, with, uh, building it, the, building the and constructing the building, um, in 25 or beyond. Um, like Kelly said, I've been here 15 years. It's always been on the CIP request, uh, for many years. It just always keeps, keeps getting pushed off. Um, we've had analysis done on it before. It is a need, um, and that's something I think we need to pursue. Uh, when you look at a, a square foot cost to maintain the building, it is our most expensive building to maintain. Uh, due to a lack of insulation, uh, our heating costs are through the roof every year. Um, so we would be looking at, uh, replacing a building uh, with, to accommodate, uh, two plow trucks as well as a loader, um, that is, uh, at our salt, uh, facility. Uh, as well as some little office space mechanical room and mezzanine for storage. Uh, so that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts, uh, of that particular project. Uh, we are looking at, uh, just obviously in 2024, just starting the consta- the design phase of that. The Menominee, go ahead.
Supervisor Bauer.
Yeah, I just got a question on, on, as long as you're on the Rock Falls building. You're going to sell off the one and build another one and you said it, is it a need to have or nice to have, but you said need. What, what is the cost difference from driving the trucks from Menominee down as opposed to building a new building and cost? You still got that maintenance cost and everything, uh, uh, and a new building just as well.
So yeah, that I guess at one point in time, this was years ago, a cost analysis was performed, um, to see about, um, abandoning that shop, um, and then housing it out in Menominee. Uh, obviously that's hard to put numbers to. Uh, at that time, the, the firm that put that together was based on fuel timeliness. It's, it's one of those, it's hard to put a number to. Uh, we have looked at options to possibly do that. Um, but based on our, our recommendation, we feel it would probably be the best practice to build a facility at that time.
I remember seeing the, the that study and it was between fuel costs, added labor costs for hours to and from, uh, yeah, equipment hours, et cetera. It was, uh, building again there is, just makes a lot more sense, or it did at the time, that, that, that may be adjusted now, but given that everything has come up in price, I would suspect that that's still the case.
Correct.
Uh, Supervisor Steen.
Uh, yes, Dustin, uh, uh, do we have, uh, any place for the trucks to be under a roof up here?
Currently, no.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lino.
Uh, Dustin, I have kind of a quick question in regards to the design capabilities that we have. Uh, you know, for this new shop, is there any, um, is there any connection with that shop to the township? And what their needs are? And then also, second part of the question, will there be any kind of communication tower on that property from a redundancy standpoint for communication, uh, in that part of the county?
So the, the town of Rock Creek, uh, they have their own facility currently, uh, that they share with, uh, um, fire, the volunteer fire department um, down there. Uh, so they're on a totally different piece of property. Um, they do not utilize our, our property or any of our facilities. We obviously, we do have, um, the communication currently, uh, with, with our Rockfall shop. We have the internet, uh, based, uh, we have, we have the, the technology there. Um, it's not ideal, but, uh, obviously, like I said, it's, uh, something we would have to, uh, address with this new building.
Okay, so it is part of the design plan then.
Correct.
Maybe have improved that a little bit.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Looks like you can, oh, oh. Supervisor Patrick Breslin.
Uh, thank you very much, Chairman. Uh, so we got 65K for the design, so then next year for, we're probably going to get popped with a pretty significant construction cost. The line item above it for the addition for the Menominee building, what is the size of that addition versus what you're thinking about construction in, uh, Rock Falls?
So the facility that would be constructed in Rock Falls, uh, would be approximately 40, 4,600 square feet. Uh, that was a preliminary design that was completed, I believe, in back in 2016. Um, that would be for that facility just in Rock Falls. Uh, the Menominee shop, uh, addition is what we would be requesting is a 30,000 square foot facility, uh, which would just be housing a. Uh which would just be housing a uh our equipment. It would be a warm storage facility that would uh just house equipment. We would have an automatic wash bay, truck wash. Uh as well as a brining facility, salt brine facility. Uh our current Menominee shop has uh forty-three thousand square foot uh. Building in Menominee, it's forty-three thousand square feet. It's got two different uh areas, one that houses uh our operations. Such as mechanics, uh repairs. Uh that is approximately sixteen thousand square foot. And then our area that we house our equipment is about nineteen thousand square feet of that forty-three thousand. We have a very difficult time accessing our trucks in and out of that current bi- building. Uh the building is forty years old. Uh when it was designed, it was did not designed for smaller vehicles. Obviously, the standard was a single axle truck many years ago. Uh today's standards is we have quad axles. Uh longer, a bigger. Uh we do have a lot of safety concerns in this building, uh moving. Trucks in and out. Uh it does not house all of our plow trucks or all of our equipment. It. Probably only houses about thirty percent of our equipment. Uh the other equipment basically sits outside. Uh in the winter, summer months, uh we do. We do utilize a portion of the recreational park um to house some of our equipment uh in the winter months. Uh but there is times where we need to get a piece of equipment, and unfortunately. We have to jockey a lot of equipment to get out of that particular area as well. Um so that. Is something we could, we could take a look at. Like I said, currently, the Rockfall Shop does not have. If we were to abandon that, we do not have the capacity to add those trucks in Menominee. Is it something we could look into? Possibly um by taking the building, building that into an addition at Menominee.
Uh Supervisor Vogel.
Thank you. So I was just curious. I I'm just asking this off the wall, but um do all townships have their own plows?
Not all of them. Uh so we. In Dunn County, about ninety percent of them do. Uh there's one town that does not. It's the town of Wilson.
So can we contract the townships in some ways, so they plow? So that they're, you know, to distribute it. I don't know. I'm just asking.
Unfortunately, no.
Thanks.
They they have a hard time dealing with their own system.
Uh Supervisor Hagan.
Yeah, um so I'm gonna be asking a leading question here. Um but um you said this was in the plan since twenty sixteen or so. Do you know if there was? A um what the difference between the um plan for this back then was price-wise versus what it is now? And then do you foresee any of the raw building materials um getting cheaper in the future?
So um back in two thousand sixteen, when a preliminary number was put together to build that Rockfall Shop. It was just over five hundred thousand. Uh I have. Uh touch base with uh local firms, uh design firms. And got an updated cost estimate, and it has increased by two hundred thousand dollars just in that twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-three. Um I don't anticipate prices coming down anytime soon.
All right, thank you.
Uh Supervisor Bauer.
Yeah, I had a quick uh just to follow up on the towns that don't have their own plows. I know Town of Peru does not. And the town of Rock Creek is right now, they're they're guy had just. Quit and they're in the process of either hiring it done or buying new trucks and getting a new guy, so. Their facility could be available for rental too if they do decide to go the other way.
Thank you Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Lino.
Yeah, I have uh one other quick question here. I'm noticing that we're seeing the. Uh hundred and eighty thousand dollars to replace fuel tanks and pumps at these outline shops. Uh I'm assuming that uh the old tanks would be sold, yes or no?
So the tanks that we have at our outline facilities um are very, very outdated. Uh they are. Thirty to fifty years old, some of these tanks are. Um that's based on the number, uh that's going off of the age of the building. That's the information I have. Uh the tanks are not safety compliant. That means they do not have dual walls, so if something leaks, uh there's nothing to contain it. Uh so we have to upgrade those for safety purposes. Uh as well as the age of these pumps in particular, we can't find parts for anymore. Uh they're the old dial pumps. Um so we'd be looking at upgrading. Two facilities per year. Uh so like I said, we have out five outline shops. We would be looking at trying to just replace two every year, um just to bring that cost down.
Quick technical question, I believe. I'm sorry, uh are most of those in-ground pumps we'd be replacing with above ground or are they mostly?
All all the pumps that are outlined facilities as well as Menominee are above ground. We would be replacing them with above ground.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That answers my question. I don't think they'll be for sale. All right.
Doubtful.
Maybe hollow way cheap? Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions. Do you want to expand on the Menominee? Expansion or?
Yeah, I guess I just, I I just want to reiterate too that it, the facility, we've just outgrown it. Um obviously, it is a safety concern um that we have. There's a number of times where we have to have multiple employees directing our trucks in and out of the building, just with the plow equipment and. And whatnot. Uh we've had a a number of accidents uh with our plow trucks backing into other trout. Plow trucks or other equipment. Um just because it is tight corners in there. I I guess I I would really reiterate, I mean, if if you want to see for yourself, please come down to the highway shop and take a look at it. Uh it is concerning, so.
Any further questions for Dustin? Uh Supervisor Whitzel.
Yeah, I got a question. So you have the trade-in of these different um. Equipment is that as you get other equipment coming in that you will trade it off with the newer stuff or or what?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so we estimate a uh a value of what that trade-in value would be, and we put that towards the the purchase price for new.
Thank you.
Uh Supervisor Gary Bjork.
So what is the possibilities of getting some kind of grants, like you like replacing the uh. You know, fuel tanks, you think that'd be like a whole land security, especially after all these uh train. Problems, accidents, you know, you think the government might. Have some funds there and maybe the state could help because we do a lot of work on the state roads and federal roads. You know, is that a possibility?
I guess I have not looked into it. Um I know when we did our our tank replacement at Menominee, there was no grant funding or anything available at that time. But there, today's world, I don't know.
Um I can note just as a point of information that the city council is in the process in Menominee of of putting in above-ground tanks, and they've been very diligent about pursuing. The sorts of grants I would expect them to look for, and they don't have any lined up either, so I suspect they're not there. Anything else for Dustin? Uh Supervisor Thomas.
Yeah, more just a comment than any kind of question for Dustin or any particular person, but uh thank you supervisor, or uh. Chair, um as a newer member here, um and I'm on the highway committee, um. Dustin's invitation to come out and take a look at the shop, um I would, I would encourage you to do that if you get a minute. Um probably just pop in there unannounced even and be cool with them, but um. After going through it and seeing, you know, we, when we. Toured it here uh last. Earlier this month, um a lot of the equipment was in there and it is tight, very tight. Um. And they 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 actually are very creative in their use of space, do a really good job with it from my observation. And opinion for what that's worth, but uh so I would encourage you to go out and take a look at it. Um. And uh you know, they they're, they're making the best do they can with what they have to work with, but uh. Um yeah, I'll just stop there.
Thank you Supervisor Thomas.
I would just say along those same lines, I don't know a a thing. Oh, I've learned a little few things about highway equipment, but I do know a few things about tractors. What bugs me the most are those nice five, are they five? Six John Deere tractors fully decked out, sitting outside all the time.
Uh Supervisor Bauer.
Yeah, I got a comment on the building again in Rock Falls. I did look it up on GIS. And I have been approached by some of the landowners out in that area. They say the county is using their property by, could they own part of that side of the road? Have you looked into that and checked out to make sure that we don't have to buy any property?
You're talking our, where our salt shed facility is?
Right.
Yeah, so that uh that's something I'd have to look into with our county surveyor. Um but yes, uh. There is some uh discrepancies on where the boundaries are for land.
Anything else for Dustin?
And I guess I just want to reiterate too, obviously, we all know that equipment is not getting cheaper. It's getting more expensive, so we do have a large. Um dollar amount uh in our assets, uh and obviously, we got to maintain and keep them as long as we can. And if they're sitting outside, they're just depreciating with just the sun and the elements itself, so.
Do we still have trucks that are old enough to drink?
Apparently, yes.
That's what I was afraid of.
Uh Supervisor Whitzel.
So I I was uh just when I had heard somebody tell me that we had a surplus from the highway. Um to fix roads and that, do we have that right now? So we was wondering, you know, to fix up our roads, if that's kind of what we can use it for, if there is.
Yeah, so that that that'll be in this.
Part of that, yeah, okay.
But yeah, and plus there is an audit. Obviously, every year they do an audit and we'll be making a determination on what that is.
All right, Dustin, I think you are off the hook for the moment. We can move on to the next piece.
Thank you.
And thank you all for being patient. We are really winding towards a close here.
So perhaps we would wish to take just a five-minute break, and then I think we can come back. I think we can knock it out of the park in the next. Either, I would say, certainly in the next hour.
Okay, so five-ish minutes. The great, all right, folks, I'm gonna call us back to order. Um any more questions on the items on the CIP? Uh before we move on to things like funding it? Seeing none? Oh, wait, Supervisor Lino.
Yeah, I I just have one quick question as I, you know, went through some of these highway projects. I see some of them are at eighty-twenty and some we have to pay for at at a hundred percent. Why is that?
Dustin, do you wanna? Oh, oh, great, be honest, guy.
No, I I grabbed that in.
All right.
So part of that document, which uh it's hidden from your view. It uh says the uh payer source. Uh but I hidden that from the view because it's ultimately the county board decision to decide how that's gonna be paid for. Because you're gonna go through all these other options that are there. So as I proceeded to hide this column. It they um the dollars kind of remain. So you see. Uh like, for example, in IT, right? You're see two lines for the same thing, and one says forty-eight and one says thirty-two. One of those lines is debt, and the other one is um. Oh levy.
I I think.
I'm sorry, we need Dustin.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, it's L R I P and um.
It's it's who, it's, yeah, which which eighty-twenty versus.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
My show. So yeah, if a lot of those projects that you see in eighty-twenty split.
Yeah.
Um that is uh projects that have either state or federal grant dollars allocated to that project. It is not guaranteed uh that we will get that year after year. Um these are projects that we apply to the DOT for. Um and we are competing again, I shouldn't say competing, but we are. All all counties and and municipalities are trying to get this money. Um that's the eighty-twenty split. Um. The LRIP program, that's another program that the DOT puts state funding involved with. Uh that is a fifty-fifty split uh potentially. Um and that is another thing that we we apply for um every year.
So those dollars aren't necessarily guaranteed?
They are not guaranteed.
Okay, so the project is like, we gotta do this because the road's gumbling. Or the bridge is busted or whatever it might be.
Correct.
There's a shot that we might get eighty-twenty, fifty-fifty or nothing.
Correct.
Okay, so certainty from a percentage? You think we got sixty-forty, you know, what what kind of shot do we have at this uh matching dollars?
So we we know, like, when we apply for these projects, we we present it to the DOT. Uh there is minimum standards that we we have to abide by.
Yeah.
So based on traffic volumes is the biggest thing. Uh that's if it's a heavier traveled road, that's usually where it falls into that eighty-twenty match. Um but those are projects that we present to the DOT. Um to either be awarded or not. That's not, like I said, that's a, I would say it's a fifty-fifty chance at best.
Okay, but it doesn't necessarily mean that 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 particular project is gonna go away or not.
If if they are on our five-year plan as shown as an eighty-twenty match. It is a project that has allocated dollars to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, as a general rule, um there are projects that we will propose that if we're gonna have to pay one hundred percent for, we might end up pushing them back. So we look, we 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 look for prioritizing those places where the uh the state can pick up as much of the bill as possible.
Correct. I like how you simplify things.
Okay, on to the next bit, I think.
Should I just stay here?
No, I think you're off the hook. Oh, wait, wait Supervisor Vogel.
It's not a highway question.
Okay, you're off the hook.
I I just had a general question. Are we just focused on twenty twenty-four? Is that all we're worried about? In this meeting? Go ahead.
Um more or less twenty twenty-four is is is. What this meeting is about, but it has to happen in the context of the past number of years of borrowing and going forward.
Okay.
So most of the rest of this context.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so this is also in your packet. So this is a five-year plan. So departments submitted what their need needs might be for capital improvement for twenty twenty-four all the way through twenty twenty-eight. So you see uh uh for highway, I'm just gonna pick on on highway because there.
Before I move to highway, let me just show you, let me just show you that if you see in the sheriff's department budget here. Um you see that they have three hundred and ten thousand dollars set aside each year. For five squad replacements. Obviously, that cost will probably go up and change over as the years go by. But that's one of those things that's a recurring cost because it's really not a capital purchase, but it's a. Um but it's something that's over equipment purchase over ten thousand dollars.
Yep. So as you, it's important to kind of see beyond twenty twenty-four. Because some of the cost uh that uh Dustin is asking for for twenty twenty-four. It's the planning phases of what's to come in the twenty twenty-six, for example. Because the cost for the Menominee Highway building. That three hundred thousand, this is all the planning phase. The five million would be for actually going in the the. The building of the infrastructure, right Dustin? Right? So um other item there that's very similar, uh it has a planning costs associated with it. So um, other item there that's very similar, uh, it has a planning costs associated with it. It's that sixty five. Is it, am I, yeah, one is. One is a design and the other one is actually deconstruction. So the design is sixty five. And the constructions will will follow until twenty twenty five. So on the la- last page, I summarized all the, you know, five year plan for all the capital improvement plant needs. For each year. So specific to twenty twenty four, there is a need of three point five, just rounding. But I've also highlighted uh, some key items to consider as you're uh, making your decisions on this CIP. Is with ARPA. One item, ARPA, we were awarded eight point eight million dollars. Since we've received the funds, we've been using them, we've applied some in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. So what's remaining of ARPA funds is one point five seven million. That could be a potential source to uh, pay for some of those items here. Or it could be uh, used elsewhere, like our operating budget. Yes, yes.
That work?
Right. And then the ARPA area, what's left, we've already accounted for. Any money that was uh, dedicated for water testing. And there is some more addition additional funding that we'd use ARPA for, which was the bandwidth. And then, of course, the fans and those have been already kind of, the fans been purchased long ago, they're kind of. Serve its purpose last summer doing the fair. So, but the, that's what's left is one point five seven mil out of the ARPA. So then we're gonna go into my uh, um, memo that I prepared for you. The memo has a lot more detail, but I'm going to bring your attention to one area specifically. Which will highlight some of the options that um, you might consider. How this uh, CIP might be funded. Also, keep in mind that what's submitted for twenty twenty four. You could go through in great detail and then maybe decide this is a goal, this is not goal. So whatever that bottom line is, then that will kind of impact how that funding and how that's going to come from. So they're kind of uh, one and one. So let's get the memo sharing.
I'm looking at it, I'm like, why can't you all see it?
I can.
Okay, I'm gonna contextualize this with two pieces of information. One, we are not voting on this today. Um, this is to inform the vote at the next county board meeting. Two, the executive committee has already voted on a preliminary recommendation for option two. So that's currently where we're focused. I suspect that uh, it's going back to exec before the board. I suspect there may be a few hundred thousand dollars this way or that moved around. But our current preliminary recommendation is for option two.
And I would add a little bit of extra for your thought before Beata. So if you take pick from IT Equipment Replacement Fund on down. Those are, those are not, they don't require borrowing. Their money we've already got or will already have or will have um, set aside. So um, again, speaking to earlier, the equipment, highway equipment replacement fund. That's how much money we'd be able to use to that for the highway equipment purchases. Um, the IT replacement fund, there would be money that would come out of what we've already saved for that. And then the fees would be if you pass the resolutions, um, by, I believe in November. Um, if the neighbors um, has a essentially profit of, if they are in a surplus year. Um, they have the approval of the board now to use some of that surplus to pay for their pre-approved CIP request. So that's why they have to come to you as a request, but they will have, they won't do those things unless they have a surplus.
And just to kind of put another range twist into this thing. Uh, for IT Equipment Replacement, I show hundred and eight. And after going through my cover detail, I realized that forty eight thousand dollars of that, it really needs to be debt. I misread when the proposed CIP came through. So that was a correction I have instead of hundred and eight. Only ninety two thousand of that will be funded, no, sixty two will be funded by actual equipment replacement. And then the reminder will be debt. It will become into replacements once it gets purchased, and that was my misunderstanding on the request.
Maybe not debt, some other funding.
Or or could be other funding, right?
So again, circling you back to what I said earlier, you have essentially those five options on the table. You have the option of um, decreasing the requests that are on the um, on the request list for twenty twenty four. You have an option for using some combination, using short term debt, long term debt. ARPA or fund balance or savings account essentially, or some combination. And we just have tried to laid out, lay out five different variations of that. Um, but you can come up with option six, seven or eight if you wish to.
Uh, Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, sir. Um, this would be a question for you. Why was option two, because you've had more information, more time to look at it, why would you pick that one? Because like the bottom three uh, lines are all the same numbers, you know, there's, what was a big reason why?
Um, I will pass that to the person who made the motion. Uh, Su- Supervisor Rogers.
The reason I was in favor of this option is because the ARPA money. I feel we should put that on the budget to use so we don't lose it. Um, we have to spend it in twenty twenty four, which is by the end of the, by the end of next year. Well, no, we don't have to spend it, we have to contract it. And I see the short term borrowing is more reasonable. Because if we're borrowing for vehicles and other such uh, items that are not going to be around for twenty years. I find it hard to borrow for something for twenty years, it's only there for five years. The short term borrowing does put that expense on next year's tax levy. However, that's probably where it belongs if we're going to borrow money for something that's short term. That was my reasoning for for making that motion.
I'll I'll do two other things. We actually aren't operating enormously, enormously more information. Basically, the the presentation that you've just gotten, we're just on our second time through it. There's not really an enormous amount of added information. And then Super Prochno seconded that motion. Do you want to speak to that or or would you rather not? Mike covered it, great. Does that answer your question? You are welcome.
So I think one of the big um, variables is when and how we choose to use the ARPA funding. And what I would say is, um, as explained to the executive committee, because of the um, on. I don't want to say totally unprecedented, but recently unprecedented um. Like treasury bond rate or interest rates and things, our ARPA money is earning us about thirty thousand dollars a month of interest. So that um, five, one point five million dollars um, is growing. So you approved use of a additional hundred thousand dollars of that for broadband it this year. Um, and we've essentially almost this with this month will have that as, in a sense, saved or set aside. Um, in interest. So whatever comes in in the remainder of the year and whatever the world's response or nation's responses to um. The federal, the Federal Reserve's um, changes this last week, assuming rates stay high. Um, higher, we have a fair amount of money coming in with that. And so there's been some discussion about other things that ARPA might be used for. That are projects that um, people have interest in. And just to know that there's a di- a little bit of additional money um, in ARPA related to the interest.
Yeah, and that could easily, uh, interest alone, at least majority of it, if close to all. Would maybe not need that short term debt, because that's three hundred and ninety. That would be my one, another option as well.
Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just a comment, um. I don't know if this is the right time or not, but I guess here goes. Um, I kind of like the idea of. Leaving our fund balance alone at this particular time, because I think that's a. Yeah, I just like that idea.
Thank you Supervisor Thomas. Uh, Supervisor Vogel.
Thank you. So I was curious, um, what makes up the three hundred ninety thousand? Is that the vehicles, like three hundred ten thousand for the sheriff's vehicles and something else that we determined was more short term? Not really capital.
Thousand of that is vehicles. Then I think there's like the GPS system twenty five thousand and there, those small ticket items that were on the very top of the CIP. That were kind of ma- makes up that three hundred and ninety.
So um, using the fund balance, I'm I'm guessing that's making quite a bit of interest as well as the ARPA funds. Um, so perhaps those more operating type things should come out of the fund balance, which is like our operating expenses. But that's just a thought and I'm guessing interest might cover that?
So this is a bit in the weeds, but I did just happen to look at that and can answer your question. So our fund balance is earning interest, it's earning interest at a nice pace. But at a lesser pace than um, than some other things, because some of that money is invested in longer term treasury bonds. And the treasury bond market has been pretty volatile. Well, it's actually gone up, now it's taking a dive in the last couple of weeks. But um, so, so we have investments that were made in say a five year treasury note. Um, that are, you know, there are some, maybe they're earning two percent instead of the five percent that things are at now. So there's a little bit of difference in terms, our ARPA is in what's called um, a local vest, local government investment pool. And that more closely follows um, some of those, uh, some of the other interest rates. And so it's right at between four and five percent.
Supervisor Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just to go back to the ARPA funds a little bit, um. I don't disagree with option two, but uh. I am a little bit concerned about us allocating all of the ARPA funds right now. Because I do think there are going to be projects that may require more. Uh, more investment than than what's available by using the interest. And I'm, I would prefer it if we would consider uh, using. Um, maybe some of the general fund and less of the ARPA or some such uh, thing. But but leaving some ARPA available for the county to consider other projects. And I know we'd have to to make that decision by the end of twenty twenty four and allocate the funding. Through some kind of a contract or expenditure provision. But it seems like that would be, that could be prudent. We only, we only have this money one time. And it's very flexible money. Uh, seems to me wise to maybe. Think of leaving a little bit of it in case there are things that come up. Not, I'm wondering, uh, county manager if. Or or Beata, if if we did that, um. How would we do that? If we, if, so we set aside five hundred thousand dollars in ARPA. And decided at the end of the year, you know, we have. Two hundred thousand dollars in projects that we'd like to contract for that are worthwhile, but we have three hundred thousand. That we need to spend or lose it. Uh, could we do that? Could we, could we put that into the? Uh, towards long term debt or some, in some way I'll obligate that so that we could retain the funds?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will throw in that one of the reasons that I noted that it's a preliminary recommendation from the exec. And has been, we're gonna take another look at it and exec uh, before county board, but that that's. That's the current recommendation. We will see, like I said, there may be a few hundred thousand here or there. And I never thought I would be a person who could say, oh, a few hundred thousand here, a few hundred thousand there, uh, blithely. But uh, there may be some moving around yet to do. Uh, Supervisor Headland. Nope, hang on. And then Supervisor Kneer. Okay. We'll try and get it sorted out in.
Thank you.
Make sure you say something really absurd now, because it's going to show up as being said by.
Question, this is a question for our uh, a sheriff to consider, um. I see we're replacing squads at box, what, a five year rotation? Is that correct? And would it make sense that that be sooner than five years based on trading costs or operational costs?
Yep. Very spotty.
So Kevin was looking, Sheriff Big was looking very much forward to spending this morning here as well. And so we're so glad you're making it worth his time as well.
Thanks for the question. It depends on what the squads used for. If it's a regular patrol. Uh, squad, they may put thirty to forty thousand miles on that in a year. If it's my squad, I might put fifteen to twenty thousand miles on it in a year. So it's really, we say a five year rotation, but that's kind of an average. An investigator may put fifteen thousand on and we keep it for seven years. But uh, it, the five year rotation is really kind of an average.
Anything else for the sheriff? Well, we've got him up here. Okay. Supervisor Kneer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I was just going back to what Supervisor Quinn said. So uh, Supervisor Quinn, were you suggesting perhaps like an option two? Uh, instead of all of ARPA, just uh, five hundred thousand in ARPA and a million from fund balance or vice versa, something like that? Okay, just wanted to check it out. Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions? Beata, do you have stuff that you need to add? Chris?
I was just going to say, so if you, so because you're not taking action today. And if you want to see something else played out, it, you can say that and then we will, um. Spell it out, bring it to executive committee in April and then you'll see it again at the April County Board Meeting. So if you want to say, we'd like to see what this looked like if you used five hundred thousand dollars of fund balance or whatever. We can, we just need to know that so we can sort of cost it out for you.
And in the interests of keeping this particular meeting brief, if you have some things that you particularly want to see, cost it out. Email them and that'll give people, I mean, because it's, we're not going to answer it today anyway. So write it down and send it along. Supervisor Rogers.
Seeing this is for our capital improvement, our year end budget. Hopefully, as we move forward, we have lots of input and feedback throughout the year. So we don't get to our last meeting where we're trying to vote on the budget and we have uh, issues of not wanting to approve it. Let's deal with that before we get to the November meeting.
I I believe it is our intention to have the CIP stuff in place at our next county board meeting. Um, there may be adjustments after that, but I believe that fundamentally, uh, it should be settled at that point. All right, does anyone else wish to ask a question? Beata, do you have anything else you need to tell us?
No, she gave me the broken one. Okay. I'm ready to uh, play, prepare different uh, different scenarios for you uh, based on your direction. What would I like to see if we did this? What would the impact be? So I'll just wait for your email and further directions until we meet again and I'll have those ready for you.
Uh, Supervisor Lino.
Uh, yes, I just was, uh, I like the idea that uh, Supervisor Tom Quinn kind of threw up. Um, in the event that we only use say a million of ARPA. Save the five hundred thousand approximately, just, you know, throwing numbers around. Uh, would we have to replace that with short term debt?
Not necessarily. I mean, that would be one possible scenario. We might bring it out of the general. Not necessarily. I mean, that would be one possible scenario. We might bring it out of the general fund. There, there, there are a number of options.
Okay, so it's not hard and fast. We don't use that number, it moves to debt.
Correct.
That's what I was just wondering there on that. All right, thank you. That's all for clarification.
Okay, going once, going twice. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
When he said noon, he met noon.